All right, so we will call the planning commission meeting of July 8. And... Okay. All right, so we'll all rise for the pledge.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Room call. Belkey.
Here.
Henderson here, Conan excuse, Grant.
Here.
Rumble.
Here.
Patterson.
Here.
All right. Agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries. And approval of the minutes for June 2nd?
Make a motion to approve the minutes for June 2nd?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries. Not starting your site plan yet, but any public comment to be heard? If we can hear her in the background, we're good there. All right, so we will begin with the public hearing of the... I open them. No, we need to open them.
I make a motion to open the public hearing at 7:32. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the public hearing is open. So this hearing was to hear any public comment due to the zoning ordinance amendments that we were looking at being made. Do you have any comments that you would like to make?
I got.
Okay, hearing no comment from the public, we will need a motion to close.
I make a motion to close the public hearing at 7:33.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are now on site plan, 74130 Fulton Wyatt Performance. With us is Andrew Wyatt. We're going to go through just a brief little synopsis, tell us what's going on over here.
Um, so first off, I'm a self major from Armada, long time, graduated '04. Would like to open a business in Armada. Would be real basic of selling wheels, tires, and alignments with tire sale. You normally put a front alignment with a vehicle, you know, when you sell the tires. With that being said, you know, a very simple business, nothing extravagant, crazy. You align an machine, two mechanics, and, you know, pretty much sums it up.
Okay, anybody have any questions?
I have several.
Okay.
Uh, first question, when I was going through the plan, where exactly are you going to have tire storage?
There is storage, there's two, actually three doors there. Um, so there would be plenty of room having the storage for the tires.
So it will be stored inside the building?
Correct.
Okay.
And I would not have, actually not keeping tires, it would be a order on as needed. So it would not be a bunch of stored tires at all.
Okay, which also goes my second question, so if you are swapping out tires, the used tires would also be stored where?
Um, you, uh, also have to do as far as getting disposal for the tires, so there's not a bunch of buildup of tires. It's a simple phone call, they do show up, pick the tires up as needed. Um, so again, there would not be much storage needed for, you know, the old tires.
So again, would those be inside the structure or outside the structure?
Inside the structure.
Okay.
Yes.
And final, if you're doing light automotive repair, the used parts from the vehicles that are repaired, are those all just going in the dumpster, are they going to be recycled, what's the plan for disposition of those?
Um, recycled with a bin being placed inside the building.
Okay. Well, that pretty much concludes my questions.
Looking at the map, that's the exterior view. It's like you have the office and then you have the tire sales area, what's that other area there? Are you going to use that area also?
There's the, there's the office area in the front there in the red, and then open floor space, that would be the shop with the two bay doors. That would be part of...
This space, the skinny space next to the big space.
Yeah, what's that, what's in that skinny space next to the big space? Are you in there also?
Where's this man here?
Oh, the next, the other.
The bottom one.
The one that says Fulton Street on the top.
They have the silhouette of the truck making a delivery in the no-delivery parking zone.
I actually apologize, we do not have that page.
This is the space you'd be...
This space there would also be, that would be where the alignment rack would be placed.
So you'd be in that space as well?
Yes, correct.
Because I was adding up the square footage on the application, it says that there's about 1,700 square footage on the page 1 of 1, and when I added up the, on the interior layout page, it says 504 square feet for the customer area and 1,500 square feet for the open floor work space. And that's 2,200, and it doesn't include that long area, you just told me the alignment rack's going to be there. I wasn't really clear how much of the space you were going to be actually applying to use.
So it'd be the two, there's actually three, the three bay doors, there's the two, then the office, and there's one on the other side there.
With the big X's?
Yes, where the two parking spots are, um, you know, the rest, that would be...
The other side of the big X, yeah.
Right. Um...
It just wasn't clear to me because the numbers didn't add up.
Right, no, and actually that's not being used, um, more the, that'd be my personal garage space.
So where's this third, that little skinny area?
Yes, correct.
That's not where the alignment rack would go?
It's, it's going to be in half, half of that, there should have been a line there, across that, that's not the full line code building.
Could you show me?
So this here would actually be a wall separating...
So this is where your alignment rack is going to be?
That is correct.
Okay, so then this is your office, your tire sales, and this is your... What, what's going on, are you using that?
This is going to be storage, racking, um, that's all that I have.
So the first, the business that's in there now is leaving, and you're going to take over that space back here?
I don't know what's going on back in that back space.
You're not using it for your stuff?
That's correct.
That back space.
That's correct.
You're just using the office, the tire sales, and that little spot to the right that you just mentioned.
That is correct.
Okay, so the rest of it you don't know. I was wondering, it doesn't say on the application how many days a week could be open, it just does the hours?
It would be Monday through Saturday, Saturday till noon.
Monday through Friday is the 8th, 6th?
Yes.
And then Saturday?
Till 12.
8th of noon?
Yes.
Okay, and I was just questioning, because I know nothing about this, delivery from, in the front of the building, so does that mean that the big truck is just going to pull up on Fulton Street? And you're going to offload like that, or is it going to back in, or...
When tire deliveries are, I mean, one of two ways it could happen, depending on how many tires you dropped off that day. If it's not a semi truck, it would be a box truck which delivers the tires. So would be able to back into them spaces if needed, or just right in front of the office area there, would very simply be able to unload them, and away they go. There wouldn't be more, no more than 15 minutes, that would at tops. It'd be a matter of dropping, I don't know how many tires we're going to sell, um, you know, but very quickly processed and on your way.
Good. The only other question I had was regarding the sign, because I wasn't sure exactly what part of the building, you need to cap, we need to calculate that the sign is no more than 10% of your building facade, and it wasn't clear to me where that exactly was, because that question about the long skinny building, and this, this page here kind of shows that the long skinny building is included?
Yes.
Um, okay, so then, we don't have that, I don't have a number for that, I didn't see it in the paperwork anywhere, we need to know, we need to know that number, so we can calculate your sign.
Okay.
Um, so we can, we can approve everything other than the sign, or contingent on the sign not being more, or something like that, but I, but I don't have all the information. That, those are my questions.
I mean, I do, that's a very simple, right, I mean, let's come back with that, if this does get approved, you come back with the sign approval?
You could actually take it to the office, you could come, if, if they approve your site plan contingent upon um, the sign not exceeding 10% of your building facade, so you bring us the dimensions of the building facade, then you could just bring that information to the village office and...
Oh, okay, so we would have to come back in and...
You would have to come back to the planning commission.
Just let you know what I'm putting up there and pray it's here.
Well, he, he told us that your sign was going to be four by eight aluminum, painted lettering, no lighting, and he kind of showed on the drawing where it was going to be, we just need to know how big that front area of the building.
Yeah, measure, absolutely.
So if you bring that in, if they approve it...
You can calculate it's 28 feet wide, you just don't know the height.
Right, so, you know, that's, if they... If they approve your application contingent upon that information, you would not have to come back to planning, you could just bring it in.
No, absolutely, I understand.
You have to, yeah, you have to wait until the month, that would be, yeah.
Yeah.
So is it, did I miss that, is 28 feet across?
Yeah, well, there's just the two dimensions, for the office, or for the open floor space is 56 by 27, and then the customer area sales is 28.
Then he's going to use that extra skinny area too, he said.
I pretty much, no, I believe it's 31 feet.
See the interior layout there?
Yeah, it's 31 feet.
Right, it doesn't have the outside.
Yeah, correct.
That's fine, but you could bring that to us.
Yeah.
If that's the date quote for...
My intention, I mean, again, I mean, the building's been there a long time, I'd really like to clean it up, put a new face on it, you know, that's, that's my intention.
Well, it's nice to have it occupied on the street side.
Right, absolutely.
Yes.
That, that is my intention, you know, I don't plan on just moving into this and going with what's there. You know, I would like to paint, clean up, make, make look nice.
Yeah, sounds good.
Can I ask one of the questions that we had with a previously proposed use in there? There was some pushback on the aesthetics of the building, and I'm just wondering, um, a lot of the newer tire shops, you know, even the corporate ones, talking, have a bit more glass on their overhead doors, is that something you've discussed, or would you plan to see in the future?
Absolutely, yes, yes, very quick, and that is one of what I plan on doing, you know, if this, if this goes through, would love to put a nice roof on it.
Any bodywork place?
No bodywork. No bodywork at all.
That was kind of, I, you guys asked, but I didn't, anything else I could have thought of? Are we good? Okay?
Define no outside storage for the building.
And what, the back of the building?
Anyway. No outside storage?
Okay, no outside storage is to be...
Is allowed.
Is allowed anywhere on the, because there was outside storage, there was things being stored in the back of the building, I understand that was not your business, but we just want to make sure that you realize that it's not something... That there was no outside storage anywhere in the building.
I understand, I understand.
Okay. Okay, anything else? Looking for a motion.
So were the two provisions, no outside storage, and we're waiting for the bound dimensions in the sign?
We're not actually waiting for it, but he would have to bring it into the village.
On the condition that he bring into the village office the building dimensions to allow the proposed signage.
I'm just trying to think of the best way to word that. I mean, I, I mean, I can bring it back without a problem at all, but like I said, I believe it's 31 feet.
I'm sure you're not going to have an issue, but it is something that's required that we have to, that's all, that's all.
So we could say, I make a motion to approve the site plan for 74130 Fulton Street Wyatt Tire Performance with the following conditions, one, there's no outside storage, and two, you bring the calculations of the front of the facade, so we can make sure that the signage doesn't exceed 10%.
Okay, and on the signage, um, wouldn't there be a problem if I did decide to go with lighting on that sign? I mean, is there, is there any stipulations, or, I mean, I know there is.
I can, when you bring the rest into the office, I can bring you a copy of the sign ordinance.
Okay.
But you're kind of modifying it, which is fine, once your site plan is approved, the building inspector can approve a modification.
I understand.
So I'll give you a copy of the sign ordinance, so you can make sure that what you're thinking goes along with it. You'll have to put it in writing to me for the building inspector to say that again.
Absolutely.
I'll second that though.
So pretty much the same thing what he has here, but just with the new design.
What do you mean? Well, he, he gave you the...
No, no, for when he does the sign. If he changes it.
Right, if he changes that, always got to do, here's my sign, this is the kind of lighting I want.
Okay, okay. Same thing he did that day.
Absolutely.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Welcome to the name of the...
Could you, could you bring me that copy that I gave you, because you need to sign?
And we have some papers from you, sorry.
You both need to sign, um, the conditions today is 7/8/21. Same photograph, the copy. I lost it, I have it somewhere then.
Here?
Okay.
One more?
Oops, sorry.
So when do you plan on, uh, starting up, opening up?
Um, very soon.
This one says?
I mean, this is a big hurdle, someone's going to pass this, definitely.
This one?
My first of the year, I'd like everything done with.
These two are mine, hold on, no, not this one.
All the improvements done?
Yes, yeah.
It's a great idea, because tires are one of those things you want to have in person before you order it. And you can just order them, but at your, you have to go, you really want to feel the tire in person. My husband will not buy a set of tires when he can't touch.
This one?
So even though you can order them yourself, you want to go and touch every set and check the tread and see how they're going to look. I'd tell him, it's a good idea, because right now people go all the way to discount them or somewhere else, they're out of town, and if they're going to town, you'd be happy to order them from somewhere local, which is a good idea. It's the one thing you can't just give them and sign it, and be like, ah, and you need to go and store it, you need people to touch your tires.
Okay, hold on.
Real quick second, did you get the...
You're good, I wouldn't order some tires without... You're all good.
I'm not arguing, because I have a first...
Not required, you're all good.
Thank you, have a good night.
Okay. This moves us into ordinance amendment discussion. Okay, we are once again going through the use variance and transitional overlay district. We have Brian Kisi here. Any more questions?
This regarding the use variance and transitional overlay district?
Yes.
Okay, um, I had one, I just want to get a clarification. So at the previous meeting, one of the concerns that I had was, um, if we do approve, if I understand, we're originally two together? If I understood this correctly?
There'll be two separate things.
Yeah, two separate.
Two separate things.
Um, well, if, if they are approved, what would happen if an applicant, I understand it's for a period of one year. So if the person that decides, well, I'm just going to sandbag this, I'm going to screw around, I'm going to play games, and I'm not going to follow through with what I originally agreed that I was going to follow through on, how would this remedy that situation exactly?
We're talking about for the use variance itself, or for the, the overlay?
Um, I think it's kind of a little bit of both, because I know that was one of the concerns was if there is a business that comes in and we do decide to approve one of these, if they, again, whatever they want to do just to, um, drought the process, because they, for whatever reason, don't want to fulfill their agreement to get the approval.
Oh, I see, so if they, let's just throw out a condition, they had to plant three trees. If they decide within a year not to plant those three trees, is that kind of what you're getting at?
If they were told to make some improvements to the property, we can use trees, uh, we can put something to do with parking, we could put something to do with ingress or regress, things like that. So there really isn't a specific example, just anything, that if they come before the commission, they say, well, we'd like to do this, and we'll agree to X, Y, and Z, and then one year later, X, Y, and Z isn't even been addressed, and they start sandbagging and dragging their feet, and come up with every excuse under the sun why this isn't done, um, what remedy would the village have in a situation such as that?
Okay, I understand, um, it's actually the same remedy that we have in the ordinance today for any site plan that you approve. So, um, it would be the issuance of a citation from the code enforcement officer, because they would not be in compliance with their approved site plan, which means they're not in compliance with the zoning ordinance. And so that ends up going, well, it starts out as a municipal civil infraction, and they can pay the fine, or if they don't pay the fine, they go to court, and it all goes through the court system until they either agree to make those changes, or the court tells them they have to, or the court will remove them from that, that property for that use.
So okay, so they were just taking it up to the district court to handle the situation?
Yeah.
Which is what happens now.
Well, we start, we start with a, we start with a ticket.
Citation given a chance.
And hopefully they respond, and they do what they're supposed to do, and then we let the court know that they're in compliance, and it never goes that far.
Okay.
That's the current process.
That's the, right, and it will remedy it.
For any violation of any zoning ordinance.
The way I see it is, is instead of it, when we do a special land use, land use permit, we do it on a pass fail, you either get it or you don't, this, the use variance and the transitional overlay district give us the ability to provide provisions, specific provisions to those people. And so they're just giving it to them on a pass fail, and then they have, they still, you still have to do it, just like with any other thing, you're going to get fines.
Well, that was my concern, was if, if we do agree to this, and in the future if someone does come before the commission, if that situation does occur, I'm just curious on what the remedies are. So if that's what it is, that was the one thing, I just wanted to make sure, because it wasn't spelled out here, and that was the one thing I was curious about before tonight.
Yeah, and, and, um, quite honestly, it wouldn't belong in any of these sections in the zoning ordinance. Um, so that's the default back to our existing remedies section of the zoning ordinance. But that's why you don't see it in your proposed text here tonight.
Okay.
Treat it just like we would anything else.
All right, that was my only question I had.
Do you think it will be set, remedies is time sensitive, like you must have this done by?
Um, no, it's a good question, um, and I don't believe that there is a specific time in our approvals.
It ties into the enforceability of it.
I thought there was only a one-year window?
I thought, I was going to say, would, would there's some specific provision about how long they have to be compliant?
If there is a specific language about how long their approval is good for before they, um... Before they have to act on it?
No order of the board permitting the erection or alteration of a structure shall be built for a period longer than one year.
Yeah, so if they haven't started their construction within that year, that's when the approval is void, they'd have to come back to and reapply.
Okay.
Well, once they, once they get, uh, once they have an active construction, then they have a permit for that, right? And that has a time limit, a time limit on it?
Permits are good for one year.
For one year also?
Building permits.
Yes, one year.
They could go 11 months on their, on this, and then they could go, they have another 12 months?
But they can only go six months, because if there's no, no activity, no inspections called for in the first six months, then that permit's considered void. So it's, so you can't pull a permit and just hang on to it till...
10 months.
And reverse it all, and reverse it all on 12?
And start something on 12, yeah.
Right.
It is six months, you have to have at least some sort of an inspection done within six months.
So there are kind of keeps on it, right, there are some...
There's some sticks to keep people moving along. Now, depending on how far along in any procedure they are, if the billing official pushes too hard and says, no, I'm not going to issue an extension, and somebody fights back, then it goes to the court, and the judge decides, are you farther, are you far enough along in the construction process?
Right.
That we're not going to make you stop?
Right.
But we're going to set some new incentives for you, and then, you know, it's up to the village.
It seems like there's a pretty solid...
Can they, um, on the use variance, how they can, um, they can attach certain, um, conditions? Can they attach a time limit to those conditions? Tell them that you only have six months to put the landscaping in, or one growing season, or, um, again, if you're getting approved in October, and we're telling you, you got to do something with concrete, you're not going to do it in Michigan, but, yeah, can they do that in the conditions, put a, put a time limit? So they don't drag their feet for...
Yes, I've got under C63. I should have put page numbers on here, but on the first page, C63 says limitations on the applicability of the variance, including the duration or validity of tying variance to a specific operator.
Sam, you were saying?
No, that was my question. I think there's, it seems like there's milestones along the way to keep it moving, and then there's a process that could do something.
You know, and I understand, I mean, there's some things that make sense, obviously, like you pointed out, if someone's coming by in November, you're not going to be doing any kind of cement work until it starts to warm up again, until like next spring.
Or comply, you know.
Yeah, you can't just generalize and say everybody has six months to comply, because it's, depending on when they apply. Case by case basis, you would have to decide.
Yeah. And most billing officials too are pretty good, and code enforcement officials are pretty good at being lenient, depending on the weather we've had, or, you know, if we've had months of rain, and you can't pour concrete, or whatever the process is being held up, they're pretty, uh, pretty reasonable about that.
Ours are very reasonable, they will, as long as they see intent, they're, they're pretty, pretty flexible.
The one thing I want to specifically point out is, um, similar to the use variance conditions, you had recommended or looked for a, the ability for the planning commission to attach conditions tying this overlay district to the specific site plan, or the specific use standards that are being considered. And so I put a sentence, it's actually the last, second to last sentence, no, it is the last sentence from 2105. So it says, you can include conditions, including not limited to periods of plan validity for things that tie the operator to the plan, so kind of mirroring those same conditions that you could have on a use variance, who would allow you to attach those to a transition overlay district.
Okay, that'll work.
I have a question. On section 2103, it says the boundaries of the TO district shall be specifically defined during a consideration of establishment of overlay. So when is, when is that going to happen? Is that now?
Uh, no, remember we had a little bit of discussion on whether we were going to set those now, or whether we were going to set those when somebody came with a plan? This takes the latter approach, so even though we have a few specific industrial buildings in our C2 district that this would apply to, it's possible somebody could acquire some additional property and want to combine that. So we want to keep that as flexible as we can.
Okay, so shall be specifically defined during a consideration of, like, uh, each discrete establishment of the overlay?
Yeah, correct.
Each incidence of the overlay, now, okay, it wasn't clear to me how it was written, that was what the...
You can credit?
I'm good.
Right, I think, do we need two motions, or just one, to send them both to, to recommend counsel?
Um, you should probably do them in two separate motions. Um, we'd like counsel to consider them separately, so that one passes and the other doesn't. You can keep them separated.
Okay. So then, what's the best wording?
That was my question.
Are there any conditions or changes you'd like to have added to either one? Let me ask that question first.
No, you can pretty much answer the... No, you can pretty much answer the, the concerns that I have.
Right across what we were talking about before, anyway, I think, anything else, everybody's in agreeance with how we wrote it up? Okay, so we're good then?
So you could make a motion to recommend the, um, recommend the draft use variance ordinance amendment to the village council as proposed in the packet.
Second?
You can't make that motion.
Somebody else make that motion. You'll, you'll be, you'll be one, I'll be two.
Okay, I've already dominated, so we're good.
What, I'm two? Your support is one.
Your support.
All right, so that's for the use variance. Now we need to do the same for the trended transitional overlay district.
Same thing, so...
Uh, did you vote on that, when you voted, Sam?
Oh, yes. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, none opposed, this motion carries, now we will do the transitional overlay district.
Again, you would recommend that for adoption, this amendment, uh, for adoption to the village council as proposed in the packet.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second?
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Sarah made that one?
No.
I made it.
I seconded.
Are we all good?
We are good on those ones, we are now on the planning commission bylaws review.
The, um, ones that were included with your actual agenda, there were a few typos, some things are capitalized that shouldn't have been, some things aren't capitalized that should have been, Sam pointed out, some places had periods, some places didn't. So I made those grammatical corrections to the copy that was in your packet. I did not make any, um, substance changes to what I sent you the first time.
Exactly what we had, okay.
I make a motion to approve the planning commission bylaws as presented.
Can I just?
Yeah.
Um, I did this agenda based on what we have in our bylaws, and it's just an outsider's opinion, they're looking in, it's kinda backwards. We had, um, and our, um, our, our suggested agenda says to do public hearing, then, or public comment, then public hearing, then new business and old business. Well, um, the public hearing was really attached to what is old business, but it was very segmented away from, and, maybe today was just an anomaly, just a weird thing, but, um, and the public was going, and, and I understand why Sam wanted us public comment before we vote on anything, but we didn't say anything for them to comment on. So, just an observation, it just seemed like this was kinda disjointed to me.
This, what, uh, where the...
The public hearing was actually tied to the ordinance amendment discussion, but our agenda has it first
Yeah, well...
before any new business or old business.
Well, we would wanna hear the public before we did our consideration.
I agree, I agree, my suggestion would just be to, you know, not nitpick, next time put the public hearing just before whatever it's tied to, so, um, 'cause chances are, on a special approval land use, somebody's gonna come to us and say, you know, this is what I'd like to do, and that falls under special approval, then we're gonna have to schedule a public hearing. So then again, if I get any new business in between, I'm gonna end up with a public hearing here, then a new business, and then what we had the public hearing about.
So for this agenda, you're saying seven and eight really are in the wrong order?
I would've, logically, would've put them in the other direction, would've put the site plan first, one, so he wouldn't have to sit through the public hearing, if it was a lengthy public hearing, and two, so that the, the stuff that the public hearing is about immediately followed what the public hearing was for.
Then with their discussion, then our discussion, then the vote.
So I guess if we wanna, the only way to...
No, we have it the other way around.
We have the site plan in the middle.
Right, so I guess with what I'm saying, you could do, um, public comment, new business, public hearing, old business, and if there is no public hearing, that just wouldn't show up, because then, 'cause we'll never have a public hearing about something you haven't already talked about, because we have to schedule a public hearing at a previous meeting.
So the other way you can do that is, um, and I, I agree it's awkward, and I think it's awkward, because I'm recalling Robert's rules correctly, this is how he's got agendas set up.
Right.
How I do it in other communities is during that public hearing, uh, you have whoever's doing any presenting, they present before you open it for public hearing, but still have those presentations as part of the public hearing line item, and then you don't actually take action on them until later in the agenda. It's still awkward, but...
It's still basically, oh, so, like...
But the reason you do that is because you're, you're scheduling the public hearing for seven-thirty, and if you have other agenda items in front of that, you're not gonna get to it till seven forty-five or eight o'clock, or...
But I was told by the attorney, it's better to schedule at seven-thirty and have it at seven forty-five, than to schedule it for seven forty-five and sit here for fourteen minutes.
It is absolutely better to do that.
Okay, no, if, if, if you say it makes more sense, it just, it seems disjointed to...
I don't agree that it makes more sense, but I, I've seen it done that way. The other thing that some boards will do is, they'll amend the order of the agenda based on what they've got, so it, it gets noticed as you have it here, and then when we sit down, we say, well, we know this site plan's gonna take five minutes, can we amend the order of the agenda?
Oh, so at the beginning of the meeting?
At the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, that makes sense, that makes sense, I'm saying, okay.
So you're good?
I'm good, yeah.
So nothing has changed on the carry?
Nothing. No more discussion?
I have nothing.
Sam?
Make a motion to approve the planning commission bylaws as presented. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, motion carries. Okay. Reports?
That would be, were you or anybody else...
Oh, this is where, what we're substituting, it's not the chair report anymore.
It's just reports, so that anybody that had some...
All right, so at this time, if there's any members that have anything you'd like to discuss, anything added besides what we've gone over tonight, so, no reports, we are looking for the last item.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are done.